At seven o'clock, any action of the council as a result of that session, Mr. Roboff?
No, Your Honor.
All right, then we'll call the seven thirty meeting to order. As you've requested, please, with the application, Mr. Jim, please.
It's great. Dear Lord, we come to you this evening, thank you for this community that we live in, citizens, its leadership. We ask that you be with us this evening as we deliberate these issues that we have before us. Jesus' name again.
United States of America, and through the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for being with us tonight. We have three joint public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will take those first, and then we will consider our agenda as published. The public hearings of the Planning and Zoning Commission are public hearings, and the guest president would like to speak for or against the request needs to register with Georgia Brown to our right. She will call him in order to be registered. We'll open each of the public hearings, give each applicant an opportunity to present their case and what they would like to do with the property. And following that, in the public comment, we'll close the public hearings, and the Planning and Zoning Commission will meet separately this evening, and we'll make recommendations to the council. So invited to be a part of your city government tonight. We'll begin with opening the public hearing on zone condition of use application CU-1406. Mr. Ron Stambaugh of our staff will introduce the request.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an address of 301 East State Highway 114 for this request. It's located at the northeast corner of the westbound State Highway 114 service road in municipal way. It's currently Zone CC, Community Commercial District, and the request is to allow for a bank with drive-through service as well as a 25-foot pole sign. This is the former 3800 square foot Grandy's Restaurant. The applicant intends to convert to a bank, there'll be four drive-through lanes on the northern portion of the lot, and the applicant also intends to use the former restaurant's drive-through lane for access to an ATM machine. This is on the western elevation of the building. Thirteen parking spaces are required, and there are 38 spaces on the site. One 10-foot in height and 96-square-foot monument sign is proposed at the southwest corner of the site, and the applicant intends to use the pole that was utilized for pole sign for Grandy's at the opposite corner. This will be 25 feet in height and 120 square feet. If you're going to approve it this evening, this will be the first reading of the order this cycle. You'll need to go to the board's zoning adjustment relative to some open space in front here and setback issue. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Justin Sharp to speak for the floor.
Like you said, we're proposing to put a bank at the location. It's a community bank, center of banking. We've been in operation, been in national charter since 1885 in West Texas and other areas, other locations, numerous. And we propose to put a bank inside and have an aesthetic location and not intrude on our neighbors or hinder any kind of traffic problems or any traffic problems around the site.
Question.
Yeah, I guess I have a few comments. Did you say you had some other ones in the area, some other First Bank of Texas?
Yes, sir. I had 157 and 183.
And do you have any more kind of random bench lines?
Um, we, the closest other one is our sister bank in Weatherford, and then the other ones are in Abilene and in West Texas and north of Abilene.
Well, I hadn't heard of it, so I just kind of looked into it a little bit, and it seems like, you know, y'all are just maybe starting to make a push over this direction. It seems like it's a more small town.
Well, the, the bank location of 157 and 183 is actually Grand Bank started in 1984, and it's been over here since 84. It's had a name change from Grand Bank to Western Grand National, First National Bank, now First Bank Texas. There was only one ownership change during that time in the early 90s. So we've been in the Metroplex for quite a while, pretty stable bank.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious if, see, I look at a site like this where this is going in, and, you know, we've got new work done finally out of 114, and that whole area out there seems to be a little bit better positioned for, you know, like restaurants. And so to see a bank go in there, not that it's completely uncommon to see a bank, you know, ride up a highway like that, but it's, it's not very much immersed in the community. It's just curious to jump a little around other areas in Grapevine, trying to get kind of more, you know, because if this was going to be community-related, I mean, you gotta, this is important to, you know, for the community, and so.
We, we have a little bit different plan than, than the other banks, and everybody's been successful with us. The location matters, and visibility matters to us, and we have looked around. But it really is the involvement of the employees and the officers in the community, and we have people from the community, and that's good stuff to be, you know, involved in things and that kind of stuff. We're, we're, we are a small bank, like you say, in the West Texas bank, with that customer service fee and all those kind of things. So we have no problem going in, into corners where, you know, the big boys are next door, the really, really big banks and that kind of stuff, just because we compete on a different level. We do different things than they do and that kind of stuff. And if you look at, I didn't bring, I wasn't prepared for, you know, an endive question like that, but if you look at, at what we've done in, in, let's say, one of our other communities in Weatherford, and how much we, our employees all the way down to tellers volunteer their time during our work hours and those kind of things, which is not really hurt, other bank, I don't know of any other banks doing kind of what we do and how much we do back to do community events and other things like that. We're pretty heavily involved in HEB Chamber and Colley Bill, and we will start with Grapevine once we get our people up here to take over and get the ground running.
Don't get me wrong, I, I really think that, you know, the banks like, you know, I appreciate the small banks, and I think that it probably is a good fit for our community. I, I think I have just a little bit of a challenge with being out on the highway where it is, where, you know, that and other areas around it are really situated for a restaurant. And, I mean, I'm glad to see something, somebody, you know, having some interest in the Grandy's. Is there a reason, you know, is it a cost, or is there another reason why maybe you would keep so much extra parking? Would you ever be utilizing that, or is that just kind of a, you know, a cost you didn't want to incur to take some of that out?
Even though it's, it's a very pretty older building, we definitely like that we don't have to do as much concrete work. We, we can, as my contractor says, scrub pretty hard on the amount of chicken you spot in there right now and all those kind of things. But we don't have to spend as much money going in to a location like that. Since we don't need a Taj Mahal, we don't need a plain-point kind of bank, that's not what we're about. You know, it fits with us better to keep our costs low and go into a place like that that already has four walls and a little bit of the rear structure that we try to use and then foundation and everything.
Okay, that's fair enough. I'm just, I'm a little curious if it became a sticking point for some folks that, you know, maybe you, maybe you did take some of that out in order to have a little bit more open space in there, if that's something y'all would be able to consider.
And, yes, sir. And Albert mentions that to me beforehand, that they had a discussion, and I don't see, I think we have two parking spots, left front, four in the four, and if we make, we have little islands, I know there's a technical word for it, but one of those little islands, to both of those islands bigger, so you take out a parking spot, you'd have two parking spots, three, and then three parking spots. It'd make the, the front of it, you know, a little bit bigger, maybe get more green space. And I don't, we've got plenty of parking. Most of the time, we're worried about our employee parking in the back, but we've got plenty for that, too. I think having a side entrance kind of helps us with parking on that, that side, on the east side and then in the front, also handicapped just to, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Will you be offering a walk-up ATM?
Uh, we've got a walk-up ATM, I thought, on, and I got more detailed plans, but it was on that west side of the building, because there's a lane in between the building and the trees that would have a drive-up ATM. And normally, we don't have really walk-ups to the ATM. You either come into, come into the lobby or other stuff, things like that, I guess you walk up to the ATM.
I'm just concerned about people walking into the driveway if they wanted to do that.
You could sign, sign on their same, it'll come inside, you know, something else like that.
Other questions? Questions? Can I ask that? Mr. Mayor?
I appreciate Jim bringing that up, but again, because you've got, you've got more than double the needed parking spaces, and it sure would be nice if there were some things you could do, as you talked about, that Albert mentioned to you in regards to some more landscape area in the front, to try to dress that up a little bit, since you've got a whole lot of concrete and stuff there. Make that better, so I appreciate that call.
All right, questions from the council?
I have a question. Staff, please. The reasons, the two reasons for this going before the board's zoning adjustments, one has to do with open space, which the PNC just discussed. The location of the pole sign seems to also be the, is there another area where it could be where we would not require any variances, and are either one of these because of right-of-way that may have been taken for the connector project, or has it had all the requirements whenever it was constructed?
The front yard setback is another issue. Do you remember some years ago, as a result of the realignment and widening of 114 and 121, we made some modifications, amendments to that section ordinance relative to non-conforming uses? And basically, what we, what we amended is barring any need to come before council for any other action, we allowed those non-conforming issues to exist as they, as they said on the property. And so had someone came in and occupied the structure without a need to come before council, we wouldn't have taken the board's zoning adjustment, but now we're correcting those. So assuming the applicant's willing to address the issue with the open space, really the only two issues here is the setback relative to the pole sign, the existing pole sign, and the lack of the landscape front yard setback of 25.
Other questions? Apparently not. Do we have any letters of petitions?
No, Mayor.
Anyone wishing to speak?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to close the public hearing?
Summoned.
Second.
All in favor? Close. Mission closed. Motion from the council.
Move to close public hearing, second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed on CU-14-06. Public hearing is open on CU-14-07, Mr. Stambaugh.
We have an address of 1901 South Main Street. This is located near the northeast corner of South Main Street and Metroplex Drive. We're Zone CC, Community Commercial District, and our request here is to amend the previously approved site plan specifically to increase the height for indoor shooting range to accommodate some office space. You all considered a condition of use request here on this property at the December 17th meeting for indoor shooting range, and then Site Plan Review Committee was tasked with approving exterior elevations for the structure, which they did on January 8, 2014. So with this request, the applicant simply proposes to add a second story, which will increase the size of the total structure from a little over 20,000 square feet to 34,900 square feet. This will be utilized for retail sales, shooting range, and office space. Approximately 10,000 square feet of the second floor will be utilized for, for office space. 29 parking spaces are required, and the applicant has provided 129 spaces. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Glenn Griggs to speak.
I'm Glenn Griggs, the architect working for the owner, and I'm just here to answer any questions that you have about the project.
Questions from the room?
Just one question. When, on the second floor, the space is on either side where it says range support. It's a little unclear as to what those spaces are, they make storage or?
On the second floor?
On the second floor.
Basically, range support, you've got the amusement, which is where the shooters are. That's where all the fun happens. Basically, the range support to the right is the range, and back to the floor is where they.
So is, is that not a second floor elevation on?
Are you talking about the areas labeled range support for open spaces? The open space, those are roof, I found it. That's roof area. We have air conditioning on the north side. We have six large units that basically extract the lead out of the shooting ranges. We have four, and then two more planned for the future. Those are the main spaces on above and below.
Mechanical.
Mechanical space, yes. I'm sorry, I thought you said range support on each side of the range.
Questions from the council? None? Thank you very much. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, sir.
Any letters of petition?
We have one letter copied for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? Close. Mission closed. Motion from the council.
Should we close?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed. Public hearing is open on CU-14-08. Mr. Stambaugh.
We have a request in Terminal A of DFW International Airport. Simply a request for on-premise alcohol beverage sales in conjunction with a new restaurant called the Wild Blue Martini Bar. We have Mr. Hassan O'Dea here to speak the request.
Mr. Chairman, y'all have any questions? Questions? Any questions from the council? Do we have any one wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Any letters or petition?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor? Close. Mission closed. Motion from the council.
I move to close public hearing. Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed. Complaints for public hearings, the council and the PNC, and the PNC will move their main right to the right. Council staying in check. All auditors and Mr. John O'Brien would like an introduction.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. We are required by the City Charter to annually have an independent external auditing firm come in and inspect our financial records and make a presentation to City Council. We have engaged the firm of Petio Brown and Hill. We have Representative Nicole Bradshaw here that will do the presentation. And before I turn the mic over to her, we'd like to point out that we do have a staff member, Deborah Russo, who's the City's internal auditor, that will help me answer any questions you have in the end. So I'd like to turn it over this time to Nicole to make the presentation. Oh, and we'd like to point out, if you haven't seen the cover of the, this annual report, there is an interesting photo at the bottom of the cover if you want to take a look.
Autobahn.
And I'd like to point out that I didn't tell anybody that. I'm aware.
Okay, and as John mentioned, my name is Nicole Bradshaw. I am the Audit Manager of the Brown and Hill, and we've been the audit firm for the City for several years now, and I'd like to first thank the council for letting us continue to work with the City. We really appreciate it. And I'd also like to thank Finance Administration and all the other departments that work with us, because they really put a lot of hard work into getting our audit complete, as well as putting these financial statements together, and we really appreciate it. First, I'd like to mention that we did meet with the Audit Committee on March 6, that we went over the reports and also answered any questions they had. So tonight, I'm just going to go over the audit report, so we're issued in conjunction with these financial statements. And the first report I have is on page one of the report, and this is the actual independent auditor's report for the financial statements. Basically, that's summary of what this says. These financial statements are the responsibility of the management, and our responsibility is to express an opinion as to whether these financial statements are materially correct. And the last paragraph is probably the most important, so we're expressing our opinion is actually on second page, so we think the letter is longer than we've been in prior years. And we are giving the City an unmodified opinion, and it's also a clean opinion, it's also the highest opinion that we can give. So it speaks very highly of the leaders in hand, council and everybody that's involved in the City finances. And the last part that's involved with the financial statements is on page 107, so at the very end, if you want to look at it. We perform our audit in accordance with government audit standards as well as generally accepted audit standards. And one of the things we'll require to be, we perform an audit with government audit standards, is issue a report specifically to address things that we have to do with our standards. Some of the things we have to do is look at the City's internal controls of our financial reporting, and we also have to evaluate the City's compliance with laws, regulations, other contractual agreements that could have a material impact on the City's financial statements. And I'm happy to tell you tonight that we do not have any significant matters to address as far as internal controls or compliance with the City tonight. And the last thing I'd like to point out, we talked about this in the Audit Committee, is a separate letter that we issued to everybody with the report. A lot of it is standard language that we have to issue with every audit report that we do, but some important things that we thought we wanted to bring out this year were some of the upcoming standards, I would think, for 2014 for that audit report, there are going to be some changes in how the report is presented. There's pretty significant changes there, and they're going to look a lot different coming up to us next year. And the second and most important change is going to impact 2015, and there's some new standards coming up with the pension report. So there's going to be some big liabilities that are going to come on with those at that time. So I would definitely ask you to bring through those, it's important, it's going to be things that are going to change. And it's also out there a lot, you know, the different meetings that are available or conferences, they're talking about those pension standards because it's a big deal. And, you know, we definitely want you to be aware of that. That's all I have, unless you have some questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much for your report and your continued engagement.
It was a good audit year. It was a very good audit year. Thank you.
Next, we are to consider the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation of, under CU-14-02, that was tabled from the February 18th meeting, Scott Lee.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, CU-1402 for Sloan and Williams Winery, located at 112 East Texas Street, was tabled at the February public hearing to allow the applicant to address some concerns regarding some outside dining issues, the location of the outside dining in relationship to the church, as well as hours of operation. The applicant has gone back. The plan before you reflects the changes that, that council expressed concern over. The applicant's moved the outside dining back five feet from the face of the building. The previous plan showed it right up to the face of the building, to the, to the north face of the building. He, he's also increased the height of the patio screening wall for the outside area to five feet along Texas Street. The hours of operation are changed to not conflict with the First Baptist Church, and those are also indicated on the site plan itself. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I believe the applicant is here also.
Under this zone request, the rest, there's no restaurant as a matter of right, right? Just a warning.
The applicant has indicated that they will have some food service. The zoning ordinance has always allowed a restaurant as an accessory used to a winery. But I, I don't know that the applicant is only going to have limited food service. The question has to be.
If we approve this zoning case, they would not be able to expand the restaurant without coming back to the council, right?
Any expansion would require a comeback to council. Yes, sir.
So, but, I mean, is it, do they have a restaurant as a matter of right or not? I mean, given two different things.
The zoning ordinance defines winery as being allowed to have a accessory use of food service, of restaurant and food service. And the applicant may want to address the level of food service he intends to have here.
But it's a conditional use, so we can limit the amount of food service that he really plans to use, right?
Yes, sir, absolutely, you can.
And I had a discussion with that. I don't think that's a problem. We just needed to find that.
Yes, sir.
All right, but we are considering ordinance to take away this restaurant as a matter of right in the winery district, are we not?
In the, the Planning and Zoning Commission will at next week's workshop discuss modifications in the Grapevine Vintage District. This is not in the Grapevine Vintage District, it's in the CBD.
All right, okay. All right, well, I went and looked at, that was one of the problems I had, the, I'm satisfied with the way they're doing the outside seating. It's not very much, and it's pretty well screened from the view of the church, and it appears to make the clearly a winery, tasting room, and not a restaurant. I don't have any problem with incidental food, hors d'oeuvres and that sort of thing, but they don't have the parking for a full-fledged restaurant. And I don't, you know, I would want to limit that, prevent that from the outer street and certainly provide the parking and et cetera. So that's one reason why we've got to strip that as a matter of right out of the winery. It's just nuts. Add that in there. So, the applicant is here?
Yes, sir.
We talked about the limited food service. You're not planning to operate a restaurant or have a menu or that sort of thing? You're just going to have hors d'oeuvres or something that might be occasionally used and used.
This is a Mr. Thomas style hors d'oeuvre.
Do you know, are you, are you willing to limit the full-blown restaurant at this time?
Oh, yes, there's no intention.
How would you define what you're going to do that we wouldn't interfere with what your proposal is? Have you thought about that?
If you're familiar with the current types of wineries that we have here in downtown Grapevine, for instance, Sopino, the, the other one there on Main Street, the name just leaves me right now, but sure, that's the ones that, same type of model. We're, we have no intentions of frying anything up or bringing in animals and butchering them.
Oh, Mayor, in their application, he had explained this, and I would suggest that we can incorporate that language, and here since it's a conditional use, we have the ability, and that would solve it, make it very clear for everybody, and it's what you want. You would address it.
They said, that'd be fine, I think. I just, you know, we get in trouble on the park when we have these escalating provisions in our zoning code, and that's what we're here to do, to provide, prevent problems. It slides on us without really considering what the expansion might be. It creates all kinds of problems.
Yes, sir.
We've got to eliminate those loopholes. All right, that's, anybody else have any concerns still or plans?
I just have to clarify one thing, staff, and I know that I've been correct on this, I'm going to make sure that I am. With the way that this case is asked for, where it says on and off-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages, he doesn't trigger that 50% food, does he not? He is not correct.
For a winery, no.
Because it is considered a winery, even though the.
Correct, a winery is not required to make.
Okay, I mean, I think Sharon has a real good suggestion about time. Well, let's, while you're up here, sir, to be, to be sure we're all clear on this, your hours of operation on Sunday, it would be one in the afternoon until nine in the evening, unless it's a festival weekend. Is that correct?
The hours for Sunday will start at eleven AM, and we will not open the outside patio until one, to ensure that there's no one on the patio.
So it's patio that we're not opening.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Inside would be eleven, all right. And then Monday through Thursday, you're looking from eleven AM until nine PM. Friday and Saturday, eleven AM until midnight, unless there's a private event, and then it might be later.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's pretty, pretty late here, right? I'm in the barter of our residential historic district. And then that's the problem when you get to the outside tables and people talking, and people want music and this and that. So you're going to have to draw a line somewhere.
Yes, sir.
On the hours or, or the outside floors, I'm concerned.
There's no speakers or types of televisions on the outside. It's just conversational tables only. And I reflected that in my conditionally statement before, to ensure that there will be no music outside.
So, so Monday through Saturday, what would be the hours of the outside patio?
It will close when the, when the status recloses, ma'am.
So it could be midnight out there as well?
Yes, ma'am.
It's just too late. It's so hard that it can't go.
Do you know what time it's at?
I may for people to be out there at night, bringing it on. They can sit in the building where it's screened and provided for, if that's not adequate. There's only going to be about four tables, five out there.
Three tables, sir.
That's not going to hurt you. But ten o'clock's plenty of time to start out outside.
Problem you're looking at, as the mayor described, you're really avoiding the residential areas. At the same time, we don't want to hinder businesses or really tell them what to do, but we've got to look out and protect those that are already here. And that's, that's really the crux of the problem right now, is trying to find a way to meet your needs and yet at the same time preserve the integrity of those that are living around here.
I don't see a problem, and my partner doesn't see a problem with it. We're very open to facilitate your needs so we can do this in harmony.
You've got plenty of room in there.
Yes, sir.
And I tell you, you can only use the outside maybe a fourth of the year.
Correct, sir.
Because of the wind and the cold and heat. So it's not going to be a big factor to the business.
Yes, sir.
But if we don't limit it, it gets carried away.
Understood, sir.
You ready for motion? I would make a motion that the application be approved with the revised criteria as shown on page two in the packet before us tonight, dated March thirteenth on the bottom right corner of the page. And incorporating the language as to food items in the document that the applicant provided to us. And that the exterior patio close down no later than ten o'clock every night of the week.
This document provided, I think you may be able to identify it a little bit better.
I can find what?
The document that you're incorporating by reference.
That's the document.
What is it styled?
Sloan and Williams Winery LLC proposed conditional use project description. I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second duty discussion. All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Good luck to you. All right. Under U. business item six, consider an ordinance meant in the code of ordinance as chapter sixteen parks and recreation relative to tobacco-free parks and park facilities. Ms. Evans.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, the Parks and Recreation Board discussed electronic cigarettes at their February meeting. The basis of the discussion was that children cannot differentiate between cigarettes and electronic cigarettes. And that it would send the wrong message if we don't, if electronic cigarettes aren't allowed in the parks and facilities. Designates tobacco-free. The council discussed this at the last meeting, March seventh meeting, directed staff to draft amendment of the ordinance to include electronic cigarettes and bring it back for discussion and consideration. The current ordinance designates the Oak Grove Ball Field Complex, the Oak Grove Soccer Complex, the Oak Grove Softball Complex, the Medmere Parks Soccer Complex, and the Potomac Gardens as parks and parks facilities that are tobacco-free. The recommendation from the staff is to have these parks as tobacco-free and electronic cigarette-free. And also to include the Bear Creek Ball Field Complex, Pleasantly Pool Park, Park, Pickering Park, and Dove Park Complex, typically those are the areas that children congregate in large numbers. So, do you have anything to discuss this with you or answer any questions that you may have?
Doug, the Dove Park Complex, would it include the Casey's Clubhouse as well?
The, the entire park, basically, shame.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, approval. Second.
No discussion, all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Ordinance, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We have the recommendations, the planning zoning commission. Okay, come on, pardon, Mr. Chairman. Get out of here. We've had plenty of long nights. Item nineteen, this is conditional use application, CU fourteen dash six.
PNC approved that six of it, the restriction that the four parking places on the southeast corner on the Service Road be converted to landscaped area. And that they would convert another parking space to landscaped area that would take the open space out of the issue.
It was approved with those conditions.
Yes, sir, approval of the P and Z commission.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item twenty.
CU fourteen oh seven was approved, six of them.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one.
CU fourteen oh eight was approved, sixty of them.
Move for approval?
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, item seven, consider resolution authorizing the purchase of ATMs in regard to traffic control signalization. Mr. Evans, last.
Thank you, mayor, members of the city council. As you said, this item addresses the purchase of ATMs now central management software at a cost of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars and fifty-two NASDAQ secret controllers from Trafficware NASDAQ, which is the supplier of the management software as well, at a cost of a hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars. The total is two hundred and four thousand, six hundred dollars. In the early two thousands, the city undertook a traffic signal system improvement project that had a lot of federal and state dollars involved because the majority of signals in town at that time were state signals. That program did establish a communication link and a management software package that enabled the central unit to monitor all of the traffic signals in town. And the biggest advantage of that is that central unit can then monitor if a signal has a problem, breaks down, goes into flash, any of those type of things. The central unit's notified, central unit then notifies the staff either by text or by pager or something like that. That software that we have is ten to twelve years old. It is no longer supported. It's not working adequately. We've got a lot of controllers that are way past due as well. So it's not a cheap proposal, but what it does is it allows us to update the software. And it allows us to bring the remaining fifty-two signal controllers up to date and enable it to, again, communicate with all the signals with the central system. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does it coordinate the traffic flow? Any, approve it over what we got today at all, or?
It has the ability to some degree, and it's two levels. The, the controllers themselves have built-in timing plans, have built-in gaps. That type of operation is in the individual controller. It's programmed in the controller by the staff. And then it is also kept in the central system. If the controller breaks down for any reason, they have to replace that controller. When they load the new one in, they can go to the central system, draw down all the data, and reestablish that. You're talking more about the adaptive system that we have. That works as sort of an additional overlay over this basic signal controller. The signal controller takes, traffic guys tell me, it takes input and it generates output. The input is the loops around the intersection, when you've got cars blowing up for the loops. It reads that. The controller then tells the signal, you need to give bring time to this leg. What the adaptive system does is it actually acts as a set of loops. And with its video cameras and its assessment of the traffic around it, it is telling the controller to give bring time to a particular leg. So it's a, it's a combination system.
Well, we, we had said there wasn't really much we could do to improve the system we put in with the grant, the latter, the connector was complete. And so the connector is complete. Is this all that we are planning to do to try to improve the synchronization of that system, or are there other things?
No, there, there are other things. Primarily on Highway twenty-six, the only two signals we actually have this adaptive system, system up and operating at is the Kimball Road Heritage Avenue intersection and the Mustang intersection. Once the signals that the, the connector has constructed at Ernest Dean, at both sides of the one fourteen interchange, once those are finally turned over to the state, then they effectively are turned over to us. We're going to reinstall the adaptive system. And that should allow us to get a very good progression up and down twenty-six. And that's probably going to be the one you see the best improvement out of. Northwest Highway has quite a bit of it operational, but the Park Boulevard signal and the two signals at one fourteen are, again, have not been released. And so they do not have the preemptive, not prediction, the adaptive system on them yet. That should help us some as well.
We're still planning on the end of this month when we ask for two dollars.
We're hoping. We haven't really gotten any indication that that's going to happen. They, they have a number of punch list items that we've given them relative to the signal work, and they're working on those, so.
It would be nice if you put a red star about them on Park Boulevard and Northwest Highway and twenty-sixth.
We will do that.
Do we have any other questions?
Time for approval.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, ma'am.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Next is concern ordinance to establish an economic development fund. Mr. John O'Brien.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, at your quarterly workshop, you received a report from TXP consultants regarding our economic development program. And one recommendation that came out of that report was to establish an economic development fund. That fund would have a twofold purpose. One is to cover the ongoing operating cost of any staff that may be provided to that fund and incidental operating costs. And two, to set up a kind of an incentive reserve program. We, this ordinance will allow us to establish that fund, and in order to do that, we have to amend the city's current fiscal year budget. So this ordinance amends the budget. It sets up a four million dollar transfer to this fund. One million dollar coming, one million dollars coming from the unappropriated balance of the general fund. One million dollars coming from interest that we earned on some excess TIF funds, TIF number one. And then two million dollars that was in the balance of the four B economic development fund. Those funds will be then appropriated and transferred to this economic development fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
We'd beat this one to death. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. This brings us to the consent agenda. There are items nine through eighteen that are not scheduled for any council discussion. Any guests can request any of these items be removed for further discussion at this time. Do we have any requests? I hear none. So item nine through eighteen is consent. The motion is in order.
I make a motion. We can approve consent items nine through eighteen.
Second.
Is that a motion, a second, all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. That completes the consent and completes our agenda. Thank you for being with us. Most good journeys in order.
Good, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed.